All right, it's six o'clock. Tony, are we ready?
Yep.
All right, we're on, and I call the meeting of the Brainerd City Council HRA Workshop to order. Ms. Erin Bruin, can you call the roll?
Sure. Johnson, Chesok.
Yes.
O'Day.
Here.
Stunich.
Yep.
Terry, Stingline.
Here.
Bevins.
Here.
Badeau.
Here.
And then the HRA, Decker, Duval.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Kent, Ricotta.
Here.
And Jaeger.
Perfect. We're underway. We have three items on today's agenda. Item number three is an overview of tax increment financing. Who's taking this?
Michaela.
Michaela, tell us all about it.
Thank you. Thanks for having me here tonight. I do have what I call a short PowerPoint presentation. It could be long for you all, but I'll be, I'll be short with it. But again, the purpose of tonight is just to provide an overview of tax increment financing, a little bit about how the tool works, how it can be used for the proposed project that you'll hear after my conversation, and then a little bit about the why of using tax increment. And I'd be happy to answer any questions along the way if you have them, or whenever I want it to be, kind of informal presentation. Again, tax increment financing, it is a tool, financing tool that communities use to capture tax-based growth that results from a new development or redevelopment project. Depending on the type of tax increment district that's to be created, there is a fixed term for the capturing of that tax-based growth, and then the new development capacity and value is added to the existing tax base for all of the taxing entities, the city, county, and school. The tax increment revenues are generated by that increased property value when that property is developed or redeveloped, when that incremental value is created. Here's a little chart that we like to show. So we start at the bottom with the existing value. Existing value is prior to any development or redevelopment occurring. The taxes that are generated from that existing value, they continue to go to the city, county, and school to the taxing entities. So there are no taxes that are taken away from what's being created today to the other taxing entities. But when that new development and redevelopment occurs, the taxes that are generated from the new development, the building, is what is captured for the term of the tax increment district to finance the improvements for which the district was created. And then one more chart, again, just to show the green, the darker green area, those are the base taxes. Over the life of the district, those continue to go to the taxing entities. The gray shaded area, those are the incremental taxes that are generated by the new development, and then a portion of those taxes are used to finance the eligible expenditures which are required for the project to occur and to finance the improvements. Once the district is decertified, you'll see over time, both you'll have the increased value from the new development plus hopefully inflationary growth, and then at the end in that kind of limey chartreuse color, that new tax base is what's available for all the other taxing entities. And so again, the purpose of the increment is to freeze the base. In some cases, if it's blighted property, you'll see the value is actually declining. The tax increment captures that inflationary value and new growth from the development, and then the higher tax base is available for all the taxing entities to enjoy. When we're creating a tax increment district, this is where I won't go too deep into the weeds, but when you create a TIF, it is generally developed or created within what's referred to as a project area. Your tax increment district can be the same size as your project area, or it can be larger. So in, simplify it, you can, your tax increment district is that single development where the new development or redevelopment taxes are being created, and then they are spent within the TIF district, and then with some limitations can be spent within that larger project area, and that's what's referred to as pooling. So it's really being able to tax, generate the dollars from within the individual districts, and then with some limitations, being able to spend them within your project area. In order to create a tax increment district, there's some steps that have to be taken. One is creation of the tax increment financing plan, which really provides the authority for the entity to use, in this case for the HRA, to use the tax increment dollars. Within that TIF plan is a statutory authority for which you're creating the tax increment district. The budget, which includes a projected tax increment revenues and project expenses for which the tax increment dollars should be used, includes the geographic boundaries, and again, that's the smaller area of the tax increment district itself, and then again, the purpose and the project description for which the district's being created. Prior to establishing a tax increment district, there is a public hearing that needs to be held, and without getting ahead of myself too far, what we're looking at is the, the HRA would be the establishing authority of the tax increment district. They would be in charge of the increment establishing the district. However, a public hearing needs to be held prior to creating a tax increment district, and that public hearing is held at the city council level. So that is part of the process. And then the last step, after the creating the district, the public hearing, certifying it with the county, and then it's an official tax increment district that's on the books and administered from that aspect from the county. There are several different types of tax increment districts, and the reason why we care about the different districts is it determines what the timeframe is. The minimum number of years for certain types of district is nine years. The maximum number is 26 years. There's different uses of tax increment and different ongoing requirements depending on the type of tax increment district. You see listed here, the most common ones that you probably will see would be the redevelopment, and that's based on the current condition of the property, and I'll go into that a little bit more. Economic development is based on primarily job growth, job and tax-based growth, and that has a shorter span of nine years, and that's based on what is built. And then the other, more commonly one you might see is a housing district, which is not based on the current condition of the property, but it's based on the end use, and there's certain income requirements of it. I have underlined here redevelopment district because that is what we would be pursuing for this project, based on, I think, the next slide, redevelopment districts based on the current conditions. So these are, there's, there's three tests that have to be, or there's conditions that have to be met. The first one is that more than 50% of the buildings within the, within the district are considered substandard, and to be substandard means that it would cost more than 15% of correcting the conditions that allowed it to be substandard versus the cost of creating a new or building a new building. So once a building has determined to be substandard, if more than 50% are substandard, then it qualifies within a redevelopment district. The other part is that it needs to be occupied, meaning that occupied by buildings, streets, utilities, gravel, parking lots, campy green space. So as long as more than 70% of the area is not greenfield, it qualifies as a redevelopment district. So those are the two primary conditions that have to be met, and then once those conditions are met, you can, you have the authority to establish a redevelopment tax increment district, and there's, there's no limits on what type of development would occur on that site. When I say typical TIF-eligible expenses, you'll see listed here, kind of the rule of thumb for redevelopment district is pretty, is all the cost prior to vertical construction. So from acquisition to site development, demolition, any public improvements, parking, street sidewalks, and footings, foundations, everything prior to vertical would be considered a TIF-eligible expense for a redevelopment district. I always like to say you cannot use tax increment dollars for certain public purposes, including any public buildings, if you had public safety, public works. Also can't use it for culture, recreational, so not for parks, any community centers, recreational facilities, anything like that. When we talk about the use of tax increment financing and how those TIF-eligible expenses are financed, there's typically two methods that you would look at. One is pay-as-you-go, and the other would be upfront. With pay-as-you-go financing, the developer is responsible for incur, obtaining the financing, 100% privately financed, typically through debt and equity. The entire project costs are financed upfront, and then the, once the project is complete in certain conditions within a contract between the city and the developer, a TIF note would be executed, and that would be the pledge of tax increment from the project, from the, from the HRA to the, to the developer, and it would be for certain TIF-eligible expenses. So the developer finances it all upfront, the project is complete, meets the conditions of the contract, a TIF notice is executed for reimbursement of the identified extraordinary costs of the project, and then semi-annual tax increment revenues are generated from the district, collected by the city. They would be pledged to the developer to repay their obligation. So in that form of financing, there's no risk to the city because the developer is taking on the risk of obtaining the financing and receiving the semi-annual tax increments.
Can I ask a question? Is it okay?
No, because.
Okay. I want to go back to something you said earlier. What, with the HRA being in charge of this, you said that way the HRA could use TIF funds. How does the HRA use TIF funds to develop it? Isn't it the developer that uses those funds?
That's a good, yeah, that's a clarifying point. What I, what I, what I was intending to say is, the HRA would be the administrative authority of the tax increment district. So when the tax increments, you know, as I said, the, the way that the process works, the HRA would create the tax increment district, they're the authority for both the ongoing maintenance of the district, there's annual reporting. The, the tax increment revenues that would be generated by the project would be submitted from the county to the HRA, and then pursuant to the financing, the TIF note of the financing agreement between the HRA and the developer, the HRA would pledge a percentage of the increment to the developer to pay for the redevelopment costs. Not to dive into the weeds too much, but in that, going back to whatever referenced earlier with the pooling, entities, cities, HRAs, when you create a tax increment district, there is a certain percentage, depending on the type of tax increment district, that can be retained by the administrative authority that can be used for other eligible expenses in the district. For redevelopment districts, that percentage is, excuse me, 25%. Going down the path of, the HRA could choose to pledge 75% to the project and retain 25% to pay for other redevelopment costs within either the tax increment district or the project area, subject to the need, the overall need of the developer for the assistance, identification of other public improvements, and those are all kind of the nuances as you, as you analyze the project and the request. But I just wanted to clarify if that, that helps, that what I meant is the HRA would be the administrative authority of the district. Technically, the tax increment funds would all be theirs to administer and pledge the needed percentage to the developer for the TIF-eligible expenses.
Is, is that identified upfront then for the developer before he?
That is, yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, so to that, when we create the tax increment district, you'll also enter into a contract, a contract of TIF assistance between the HRA and the developer, and it will be, include the provisions that the developer needs to meet, that the city agrees to, and it will include what the maximum terms of TIF assistance will be. It'll be, it's typically a principal amount and, or a number of years, whichever is reached first. But that would all be negotiated upfront. And then there's also conditions within the agreement that keeps post-construction, making sure again that the developer has made the investment in those TIF-eligible expenses and the project as a whole prior to the release, the TIF note execution and release of the TIF note, the TIF funds.
Thanks.
Alternatively, would be upfront, city financed. You'll see this on, to a lesser extent, and upfront assistance can either be in the form of an inter-fund loan where the city is, city or the HRA is financing a portion of the costs with internal funds, and then using tax increment to repay itself back over time, or the issuance of bonds, in which case, city is, city or HRA are issuing bonds and then collecting future tax increment dollars to repay the debt service. Again, our, our approach for this project would be the pay-as-you-go with the developer financing the entire project costs. The heart of tax increment financing is what's referred to as the but-for test. So prior to establishing the district, following findings, and so the, the findings are made by the city through the public hearing. It's a little bit of a wonky thing, even though it's the HRA's district, it's the findings of the, the city through the public hearing. One, that the project qualifies as a tax increment district. I walk through qualifications of a redevelopment district would be. Two, that the proposed project would not proceed without public assistance, and this is the but-for test. So but for the use of tax increment financing, the project as proposed would not proceed, and that's a test and analysis that's done prior to the district being created. The third test is that the increased market value of the property to be developed is greater with tax increment than if no public assistance is provided. So you're really trying to use tax increment financing as a tool to, one, facilitate redevelopment of the site, and two, to maximize the value that can be created on the site with the use of tax increment. So when we're, I'll dive into the next slide on analyzing public assistance requests, but the purpose of the review and the needs analysis are twofold. One, to understand the project as, as proposed would proceed but for the provision of tax increment assistance, and two, if it's determined that assistance is necessary, it's understanding what an appropriate amount in terms of assistance would be based on the financial needs and gap of the project. So kind of a little bit of the why of tax increment. This is, this is a generalist of why cities, HRAs, public entities use tax increment financing. One, it's to stimulate development or redevelopment where it otherwise would not occur, and that's the but-for test. Two, it's to encourage development of uses that otherwise might not occur, and that could be there certain types of development or within certain areas of the community we're really trying to focus. We, it's often, we said, we capture the, the increased tax base for a certain amount of time, but ultimately, the goal of tax increment financing is to enhance and grow your tax base, even if you're deferring that growth for a number of years it's captured. Sometimes it's used to facilitate infrastructure or other development plans that a community might have. So again, this is kind of a general listing of the why of using TIF. When we're analyzing the request for financial assistance, there are different parameters that we consider, and really what we're, again, with redevelopment districts, it's focusing on financing the extraordinary costs that are really essentially barriers to that development from occurring. Things we consider when recommending the level of public assistance is what is the, the public entity's return on investment, meaning what is its job providing from, whether it's jobs, tax base, other public benefits. Redevelopment is another one. We also look, as we dive into the financials of the project, what is the purchase price and other development costs? Are they all, are they reasonable? What, again, is, is driving the financial gap? We look at the measurement of public-to-private investment. There are certain thresholds that communities have as far as how much public investment based on the private investment they're willing to make. Similarly to what is a level of public assistance to their private equity, making sure that your public investment is typically, we try not to have it be more than the private equity investment, just from the, the overall capital stack of the project. Also, look at the extraordinary costs, as I mentioned, what are those barriers to the redevelopment and development project occurring? And all of that really relates to what the financial gap of the project would be, and then trying to understand if there's any public guidelines or policies regarding the term of collection. As I said, a redevelopment district can go up to 26 years. In some cases, a full 26 years is needed. In other cases, if we're able to structure the amount of the assistance, look at what the extraordinary costs are. Is there a way of reducing the term, again, to meet the, the overall other private to public investment, extraordinary costs, and the ultimate gap of the project? Process for creating a tax increment district, it is a 45 to 60-day process, and that includes notifications, starting with to the county commissioner. That is required for redevelopment district. That provides a general description of the project, where it's located, and what the, the description of the project is. Then the draft tax increment plan is provided to both the draft TIF plan and the financial and economic impacts of the project are provided to the county and the school district. There is a public hearing notice that's published at least 10 days prior to the public hearing, and then there's ultimately the public hearing to consider the tax increment. And then lastly, would be the consideration of the contract TIF assistance agreement between the, the HRA and the developer, and then that TIF assistance agreement is where it includes the, the terms of the TIF assistance, including the total maximum amount, the number of years. And then the last step is the ongoing administration of the, or it's not ongoing, but the administration of the TIF agreement where the extraordinary costs are verified and any other requirements of the agreement. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or move on to the next piece.
Any questions?
I have a.
Yeah, Mr. Chesok.
Thank you. If this moves forward and the council approves the HRA operating the TIF district, I think that's the right term, does this then go on the HRA's great, list of housing units that you maintain, the, the number that will be built here? Or is this, will, will the HRA have any management control of the housing units if this goes forward?
So, Councilman Chesok, we would not have any control over the rent out there. We would not owner-operate any portion of that with the, the district as, as presented, and due to Faircloth rules, we can't actually create more public housing.
I, I heard her mention it was a, yeah, it's a maintenance to do if this goes forward.
For the, the district, there's ongoing reporting.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all right. I just wanted to clarify.
Yep.
And then, so with the properties that exist there, there would be three of them used, and the two buildings north of the Thrifty Building, correct? Is that?
That's correct, and I think our developer will explain that.
Yeah, Jeff, where are, the next item on the agenda is this actual TIF district. So if you've got questions about that, you might want to hang on until.
Kind of, yeah, I get it.
That part of the presentation.
Okay. And then, so going back to your, your item about the, the amount that you'd negotiate between what the HRA would maintain, retain, when we're talking about these properties, and it's a, it's an area, a TIF project area, with this particular project, the way I understand it, it's, it's one area. Is there going to be a larger area? Because you talked about developing further. Would you foresee any further development by the HRA? Because you talk about a 25% of the captured increase in taxes. So I'm just curious about that.
So at this time, the, the proposal would be just for that specific area?
Okay.
And I, I just want to clarify that I think those are, those are questions, those, the answers to those questions are sometimes obvious and sometimes more discussion as far as, but when we're looking at the tax increment district itself, which generate the increment, it would just be this proposed project. If the HRA has a larger project area they want to consider, that's another conversation of.
I guess what happened there, you're giving me the outline of how all this works in one big picture, but we're focused on this, so that's where I wanted to make sure I was, okay. I get it. Thank you.
Michaela, could I ask one question?
Yeah. Yes.
The, the maximum amount of administrative fee is 25%, which I've done probably 25 TIF districts, and they've all been about 10%.
Oh.
It is, 25% doesn't seem like the norm. It, so I just.
Yeah.
Wanted to have that discussion.
No, and that's not for admin. So I, I should clarify, there was a slide, I took it out because it gets kind of into the weeds. With a redevelopment district, a, an entity, the, the entity, the HRA of the city, can retain up to 25% for out-of-district expenditures. That's referred to as pooling. The maximum that you can, they can retain for administrative expenses is 10%. There are, when you create a tax increment district, there are, in some cases, the decision is made for you if all of the increment is, is necessary for the project, but there are some municipalities that want to retain the maximum of 25% for pooling to pay for other redevelopment costs in the project area. So let's say the HRA, all hypothetical, the entire downtown is going to be their project area. Their goal is to maximize the use of tax increments from this district and potential future districts, retain as much as they can, because if you don't retain more now, you don't get to retain it later, and retain 25% for additional spending on eligible costs within the larger project area, versus pledging as much as you can to this project, not pooling and getting it back on the tax rolls as soon as you can. Those are policy decisions that we haven't had conversations, and we, we haven't really dived into the numbers, see what the need is. But yes, to clarify, the maximum for admin is 10%. The max for redevelopment out of the district is 25%, which includes the 10% for admin, and those are all, city typically do between 5% and 10% for admin based on what the expenses are.
Okay. It, it appears we're all real anxious to get on to this project. You can't, can't finish item one before we get on to item two. So let's move on to item two and hear about this district. Who's given that presentation?
So, Ms. President, I'd be happy to introduce my memo, and then introduce the development team if you'd like.
Perfect.
James and I will kind of tag-team our memo, and then we'll let DW Jones.
Let's hear about it.
Give some information. So as, as you've heard.
Thank you, Michaela.
Yes, and thank you, Michaela, for, for giving us a TIF 101. It's always helpful to wrap our heads around that, especially if we don't do that every year, which we don't, and in some cases, every couple decades we don't do it. So to kind of refocus on what, what the tool is and why it's available. As you all have heard, certainly over the years, you know, the HRA has been working with city staff here, as well as the development company, DW Jones to my left, on the redevelopment project at the corner of Eighth and Laurel. Some people have heard it called 805 Laurel, just as a kind of a project descriptor. Much of that redevelopment pros, project, property has, has been vacant four years, and it's what we believe is primed for redevelopment. Proposed project would include the demolition of the existing buildings within that project footprint, with the plan to rebuild a mixed-use building, a commercial space, along with 78 units of multifamily housing. The plan also includes 65 units of underground parking underneath the building, along with additional surface parking on the back of the building. Due to the prohibitive costs associated with the redevelopment of, of this size, the developer is researching and applying for multiple funding sources to go along with the, the traditional financing and owner equity. The developer has completed, or completed the Brainerd HRA's public financing applications, you know, a number of years ago actually at this point, and finally taken some steps forward, which is great. One of the additional funding sources that is being requested is that creation of the redevelopment TIF district. An engineering report was completed this past January by the engineering firm LHB, which did conclude that the buildings within the project footprint would meet the definition of blight, and, and these parcels would meet the standard for the creation of a redevelopment TIF district, and similar to what Michaela had, had alluded to, meeting those tests. We've also been working with Baker Chili, as you've been introduced to, and we'll be able to partner with them going forward as long as we can. Representatives from DW Jones, Skip and Andrew Ducheno are here to provide some more insight into their proposed project, and James, I think, will pick up the second part of this.
Yeah, I'll just kind of briefly touch at a, a high level on, on the zoning part of this. I know I've been working with Eric on this, as well as Skip, on, on how this works with the zoning code. So this property is located in the Town Center District, which does allow for a first-floor residential. However, along A Street there, there is an overlay district in that portion, which requires the facade along A Street to have commercial in that spot. Either a common entry or a shop for, for an entry essentially. So the remaining portion behind it along Laurel Street in the Town Center District would, would be allowed to have first-floor residential. With this, staff did also include a number of supporting policies within the comprehensive plan, just to list a few of them, within land use, encourage mixed-use neighborhoods that are walkable and bikeable, ones that provide daily services that residents need within walking distance of their homes, also endorsing a vibrant downtown and supporting investment within our corridors, within housing, ensuring adequate supply of quality and affordable housing units for future and current residents, also driving infill development and redevelopment towards areas where current infrastructure is present, or places where high levels of blight or disinvestment exist. So with that, turn it over to Skip to kind of explain more of the details of the project, and I certainly answer questions afterwards if there's any zoning questions.
Yeah, thank you. You guys took care of my first paragraph and a half. I appreciate that. Well, as they both had said, Andrew and I are with DW Jones. Many of you have seen us before, as we were trying to do an affordable housing project here maybe three years ago, before COVID, I think. And then we looked at trying to do a market rate, and we just could never get it to work. Part of the problem was, the land acquisition was too high. I think when it first started, it was well over a million dollars. It's no secret that we paid $400,000 for it, and we finally just pulled the trigger and bought the property. To get it for.
Is that all the property, Skip?
That is only the Thrifty White.
Got it.
Not including the, the Phelps properties. Not including the, the Phelps properties. Those are additional.
Thank you.
But the Thrifty White was the hurdle. It was the hurdle. We, the, the lower price has allowed us to look at things differently and having a better shot of making things happen. On, on the bad side of things, interest rates aren't working with us and are our construction costs. But fortunately, the Minnesota Legislature has appropriated a pretty big chunk of money to a program that we access to fund these types of projects. And I'll just pass this around. Jumping ahead of myself here, but the workforce housing development program is our key tool in being able to provide quote-unquote "market rate" housing in Brainerd, Minnesota. And it's a, the simplest program at Minnesota Housing Finance. It started out at need and maybe that's why it's simple. They haven't messed it up yet. So we'll give them a few more years. But so far, they've been, they've been good. It's a simple program. You have a RFP. Don't know exactly when it's going to come out because the legislature just appropriated and the governor signed into law the housing bill a couple of Mondays ago. But it'll be coming. In the past, they've funded the program about $4 million every biennium. This, this year, they appropriated $39 million for the biennium. So it's, they've never had this kind of money in the program. So we think this is a perfect year for a big ask. So that's what our plan is to do. The, the, the program requires, it is actually, the city is the applicant. It requires the city to have a developer. City really just becomes the conduit. They fund the money to the city, the city then funds it to us. It's, it's not complicated. The paint, the funds come in three payments. It's not like per draw, there's checks coming out. It's three equal installments. And it's, it's, it's simple to do. It does come with some caveats that you you can get, well, it was up to 25%. I believe the final bill now raised it to up to 50% of the project cost. But you have to have a local match. And the local match can be from a redevelopment district, TIF dollars. It can be from a housing trust fund. It can be from other brands, other, other pots of money. But it, it's basically, it's a two-for-one match. So the city, if, if we have a million dollars in local funding from all those types of sources, we can get up to $2 million or I think up to 50%. The 25% is where it has always been and I think we'd be under 25% anyways. Even if it didn't change. But it's, it's a great tool. If you go over $500,000, it requires prevailing wage. And prevailing wage is a significant cost. We're attributing about 12% additional cost in for the prevailing wage construction. So on a project like this, in all honesty, if we went to $500,000, we could just bid it and have a little bid. We go $500,000 or $1 over, now it requires prevailing wage and we really need to ask for more than a million dollars more to get to the same $500,000. Does that make sense? There's about a million dollars that we we have to ask for just to stay the same. So it, it's a, it's a big cost, but the state legislators feel that it's not something they can change. They're not willing to change that. The labor unions are pretty strong and they would rather appropriate more money and have it be prevailing wage than not. That's the game. But the, I'm going to let Andrew talk a little more specifically about the property and then I'll come back a little bit more with what we're going to all need to do to work together to, to see this happen.
Yeah, so I don't know if we can go back to that first, the site plan. I don't know, maybe it'd be, it'd be okay if I went up to plan it.
Absolutely.
This is the overall layout that we have. So the Thrifty White building's right here and then we've got the two other commercial spaces up here. We've got the central parking lot right here that gets access off of the alley here. A Street, Laurel, Ninth Street. Up in this corner, coming back down, there'll be a ramp that goes down to an underground garage. The main entry into the apartment unit is going to be here. And then the main store accesses will be off of A Street here. Go to the next slide. So this is the underground garage. We've got 65 stalls that drops in from here. We've got a little bit of a bike storage there. Then there'll be a central elevator for the tenants to use. If you go one more.
Where's the underground, where's the garage, the parking underground entrance? What, where is it?
That'll be off of the alley. It'll be in the northeast corner of it. And it'll drop down. This is the first floor layout and we've got two kind of main areas. There's the commercial on the west side and then on the south is where all the residential is. We've kept these areas separate, so commercial can't go into residential, but a residential can go into commercial. There's a number of amenities. We've got a community room, some unisex bathrooms. There'll be a central trash chute, mail package room and all that fun stuff. If you go one more up or one more down. So then this is the second, third and fourth floor and this is going to be mostly made up of, so it'll be all residential. And all the units are a mixture between studios, one bedrooms, one-bedroom dens, two-bedroom, one-bass and two-bedroom, two-bass. So that'll be 78 units. All the units from the second floor up, they'll have, well, most of them will have their private patios and decks. They'll have a full set of appliances in the units. They'll have washers, dryers, dishwashers, ranges and kind of that whole thing. And yeah, that's more or less the building. If we go to the final page, the elevation. So this kind of gives you an idea of what, what we're going for. So this will be along Laurel and this is along A Street. So we've got the individual storefronts there. We're trying to do kind of a little bit more modern look to it, so we think it will have some Uchi panels, a lot of brick, some horizontal, vertical steel siding also.
What are the dimensions in footage?
The dimensions?
Yeah, like underground, the footprint.
Could you go up one?
Approximate?
So the overall length of it is around 300 feet by 124 feet.
Is that north of length?
So east to west would be 300 feet, north to south would be 124.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Are you planning on anything for EV, like for vehicle charging?
So we've done, what we've done in the past is we've ran conduit from the mechanical rooms into certain areas in the garage. So that way, if someone wants it in the future, we can always but we know that's kind of the up and coming thing, especially in these more area buildings.
91 parking spaces gives each person one parking spot each apartment?
So there's
What does that work?
So the garage space, the garage spaces, they'll be additional.
Okay.
At an additional cost. And then there's 26 surface stalls. And then there's also, there'd be some on-street parking.
So how many bedrooms total in, in counting the studio as one?
Around 100, give or take. I'd have to.
Okay.
I'm thinking 106.
There you go.
Okay.
If you look to the west here, we have angled parking through our downtown area. Does this leave room for us to add angled parking? I assume most of this is going to be torn up during that time. I think if we add angled parking in these on-the-wind side. If not both.
Along the, like Laurel?
Yeah, you're, you're not. You're not, you're not going anywhere further into the sidewalk or anything like that? Or the existing building?
No, so that would all, you know. I guess we would go as close to the property line as we can, but not past that.
And I, I don't know what our road width is there, same as what we have downtown.
If you go to that first page, I think you kind of might be able to see that.
I know we are figuring that all the sidewalks will have to be replaced, that construction will have damaged them.
So it would be a good time to.
If there was to be any change there, that would.
I'm looking at the overhead map right now. It's similar width to the other one. Just more sidewalk, I guess, in front of Thrifty White here that would be removed. So it'd be the same width as down, the rest of downtown. But there'd be a potential for angled parking, it looks like.
And I don't want it to be a roadblock, but I don't know if that's some type of cost sharing that, that could be shared with the project.
How many stairways are in this? One, two, what?
Uh, two stairways.
And then what do you accommodate for accessibility? I mean, other than elevator, what is in any apartments or?
There'll be, we'll have full ADA unit and then we'll have an adaptable unit. We'll have a unit that has strobes for hearing impaired and as long with flash, the, the hearing, the hearing and stroke flashes for that. Then there'll be, you know, everything that's required. So there'll be handicap parking stalls in the surface lot. There'll also be down in the parking garage. So we'll, and then it'll be fully co-compliant.
You have grab bars and that in the bathrooms, that type of thing?
And the ADA units and then all the rest of them, they'll have backing for it so we can add it if, if the tenant wants it.
Is there commercial parking in either of the two lots or is that all for residents?
Good, good question. So we're, not really, no.
Because you have that parking on the alley side where you see cars there now.
Right, and that's what, you know, the main fronts for those buildings will be along the street side. The employees would, will have access through and into this backside of the building, but we're not really thinking that would be the primary use for customers.
What about the north side? Alley side where there's cars now. New, keep going up.
Right here?
Yeah.
So those.
You own that?
We don't.
Oh, okay.
We don't.
So they could look at possibly leasing spots for the owner of that lot? It's a possibility.
Yeah.
They can privately do that, but I think that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I it's, we're putting a lot on this side, so we're trying to maximize it. I, I guess the parking side of it, I'm not totally sure.
Maybe I could ask either one of you, what, why are you doing this? What's your ultimate goal?
Well, I think, you know, the goal is it's kind, you know, everywhere we go, we hear the same problem. Everyone's looking for housing and they need something that kind of fills the gap between affordable and, you know, the new home prices are getting out of control, so. One, you know, Jennifer's got us involved from the beginning, so we've been trying to get this going. We think Brainerd is a very great place. There's a huge need for it. And, you know, it's close to where we're from too, so it'd be fun to do a project here.
So you're telling me DW Jones is doing this because you feel Brainerd has a need for housing, which I wouldn't disagree with, and you think it'd be fun? That's what I heard you say. Is that why you're doing it?
Well, I mean, I, we're, we're doing it. We're, we want to have a successful building and, you know, generate money and.
You know, for profit.
It's a business.
Yeah, you're doing it for profit.
I hope so.
That's, that's the whole point, right?
That's great.
I just wanted to hear him say it, Kelly.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, it's a fair question, I think.
I think it was a great question.
Yeah, so that's why you're doing it, right? Okay, good enough. I, I didn't really care for your first answer. It just seemed to be kind of.
That's why any business does anything.
Well, I understand that. I want to hear him say it though. I was just kind of surprised you just didn't say that.
The one part about being fun is we've never done a downtown project and this is really neat.
So what do you think about potentially having 30, 40 kids live in that building? What are they going to do? What do you guys think of that?
Well, part of the reason we don't have any three-bedroom units in this building by design. I'm sure we could fill three-bedroom units if we had them there. But we were trying to go for all these businesses that are trying to hire people. There's no place for them to live. And so they may be coming with one person until they decide whether they want to move their family here. They, there are always kids in there for sure, but I don't know how many. But yeah, it's a downtown project. We don't have the luxury of having land to have a, a player here for the kids. We don't have that amenity on this type of project.
Yeah, I, I kind of figured that. I mean, it's obvious, so. So when you talk about, when we talk about that, potential for I don't know, maybe, maybe a dozen, maybe 20 at least. Could easily be that many kids from ages, from infants to high school, obviously. That's the one thing that kind of troubles me about this project. I, I don't have anything against the developing of the project. It's just that you're, you're potentially going to have a lot of kids within a stone's throw of three bars, let alone a good arm could get you four bars or five bars. It, it just doesn't seem right. It doesn't seem like a good fit.
You can only allow apartments in the outskirts of town, so they have to travel into town to get to a grocery store, to get to any store? This is the center of town. This is where you want your population, Jeff.
If you're agenda 21 driven, sure, Mike. Yeah, that's good.
That's up to the family to decide that.
Yeah.
That's not even a, like, that's not a discussion to even have right now. I understand what your concern is. This is a major investment to Brainerd downtown and a, a major improvement to what's there right now. You can sit here and come up with problems that could possibly maybe occur just like a meteor could hit Brainerd one day. But why sit here and do that?
It's also three blocks from Washington, which, you know, is from my perception, pretty close to a, a playground and a place for younger kids. I don't see there being that many young kids. There will be some, I'm sure, you know, maybe 15, maybe 20. It, it's near schools. It seems like it's, you know, for the number of kids that I anticipate there being there, I don't see there being a problem.
It's also located. It's also located on a trail that has access to just about everything.
It's not too far from the Y.
Every, every single business that exists in downtown would benefit from having 78 apartments additional to what's there right now. That's just more people in walking distance from every shop that's downtown. That's what we need. This is great for the area.
Well, I think the questions need to be asked. I mean, I'm, I'm, did I say I'm against it? Might sound like it.
It has sounded like you are against it.
Sure does. You're quick to jump me. That's okay. That's why we're here. I mean, I, I, I can speculate as much as anybody else. Try to get back on track. Yeah, that's fine. And ask any questions you want, any of them. The developers are here, our HRA. So when it comes to the HRA being, managing this, I guess is a proper term, I'm. Just the financing part. Right. Just our, what is that a TIF part of? When that happens then, and if we declare this a, a TIF district that will be managed by the HRA and is that the end of it for the Brainerd City Council? Or is it all up, all the decisions at that point are left up to the HRA board?
From a planning perspective, there's still things to do. Mixed-use development, five-plus units, our conditional uses, as well as the height of the building. So there's still public input from the design process of things as well. So, but from the financing part of it, I believe then it would go towards more of the HRA.
I'm absolutely positive we can do something on parking lights, right, Mike?
Parking lights?
Yeah, parking lot lights. We seem to want to do that on everything. Jennifer, what's up?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board and council, and maybe I'll just rewind this a little bit. Started working with DW Jones back in 2015, actually, when the Thrifty Building when I was the director of the.
Started working with D W Jones back in two thousand and fifteen, actually, when the Thrifty Building, um, became, when I was the director of the H R A, the Thrifty Building was, was for sale, and the owner at that time wanted one point two million dollars for that property. One of the biggest things that, as the H R A, we were looking at at that time was how can we increase housing? Um, and how can we increase housing in the central area of downtown? One of the other goals of the H R A at that time was downtown revitalization. And so the H R A board at that time discussed the need for revitalization, which there was a lot starting to happen there, and then also the creation of housing, which would support the businesses that were downtown and begin to revitalize that area. Um, so several years ago, started working with D W Jones on the potential for this development at some point. Um, as Skip mentioned, it was not attainable because the cost of that building was astronomical. Um, to D W Jones's credit, they continued to watch that property to see if it would come down in cost from the one point two million dollars, and, um, were able to successfully negotiate the one point, or the four hundred thousand dollars. In addition, working with the Phelps Brothers to have them join in on the redevelopment, so it would be that entire half block. Um, the question, Jeff, was on the H R A and what authority they would have, and I guess I would defer to Michaela, but as I understand it, the city council would hold the initial public hearing, um, and would, uh, establish, hear that from the public, would establish those criteria. At that point, the H R A would be negotiating the terms of this deal. In TIF districts, what you do is you enter into a development agreement with the H R A and the developer, and the H R A board would be the one that would negotiate the terms of the development agreement, am I correct in that, Michaela?
Yep, that is, that is correct, so, and the, and the H R A board would also have to adopt the TIF plan and create, and establish a tax increment district.
In conjunction, and I think, you know, that in partnership with the city.
With the agreement, you know, there have been cases if the city wants to be part of it, but there have been cases where it's just the H R A and the developer, and then when I meant the reporting, there's annual reporting requirements of the state, all, um, all the requirement of the H R A. And the payments back to the developer and the H R A.
May I ask a question then?
Yeah, Jeff.
So when you talk about your two-bedroom, two-bath, how many square footage and what do you estimate the rent to be? And then give me a one-bedroom, one-bath too.
Sure, so a two-bedroom, two-bath is eleven hundred and forty square feet, and our rent is, uh, twelve fifty. A one-bedroom, um, one-bedrooms range from six sixty-two square feet, um, up to nine hundred and thirty-nine square feet. And they range, uh, from nine seventy-five to eleven hundred and twenty.
And then this is workforce housing, so you would get that money, is that the, is that the, what, you said they bumped it up, no, that's, is that, that's, that's the same money, is the four million up to thirty-three?
Thirty-nine million, yeah.
That's the workforce?
Right, it's a grant that would come from the state to the city, to us, to pay for sticks and bricks.
Okay, and then.
And prevailing wage.
The, and, okay, then when a person, um, e- uh, enters into a le- uh, rent agreement, do, are they required to be working? Is that part of the workforce housing connotation there?
Um, they don't have to be working, but they would have to meet our tenant selection criteria, they would have to qualify to be able to pay for rent. Um, some people have a bunch of assets, don't need to work, they might be retired.
Sure.
Um, there, and there are people who need to work because they haven't got there yet.
Okay.
So, um, is, uh, we would be doing background checks on all the tenants, just like we do with any of the other properties we manage here in Brainerd. And, um, they would have to have a credit score, or if they don't have a credit score, they'd have to have somebody co-sign on the lease.
Okay.
So those would be all details that we would.
Will you be allowing pets there with a deposit?
Would allow pets.
Okay.
One, one other piece that, uh, that I wanna throw in there too, that I didn't get to talk about is, I had mentioned that we have light income restrictions. And you may al- already know what the housing, the cash, or the Crow Wing County Trust Fund income restrictions are, but I thought I would just explain that to you if you don't. So we would have, of the seventy-eight units, we would have ten units that would be restricted to eighty percent area median income. So most affordable housing projects are sixty percent of the area median income or less, so this is a bar above that. And just, just to give you an idea, the, the current in- income levels are old, there's supposed to be new ones that were supposed to come out this month, I guess they have one more day, but I'm not counting on it.
They did, they're up, oh, alright. Oh, yeah, little faith.
I, yeah, I don't have faith, so, so last year's for a single person, it was forty-six thousand, seven twenty, two people was fifty-three, three sixty, and three people was sixty thousand. And I'm certain they went higher this year, um, with, with the wage growth that has taken place in the last twelve months. So the next level, we'd have thirty-seven units restricted at a hundred and fifteen percent area median income. And again, I have a two thousand, uh, twenty-two numbers for this, for that, a one person would be sixty-five thousand, six eighty-eight, two-person would be seventy-five thousand, seventy-two dollars, and three people would be eighty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-six. And the remaining thirty-one units would be market rate. And we would have that restriction as long as we would have the deferred loan from the Housing Trust Fund. If we were to pay off the Housing Trust Fund loan, those restrictions would go away and would be all market rate. In our opinion, based on other market rate projects that we've developed in the other part of the state, which, to date, we've received awards for eight projects through this program, six of which are built and occupied, one is under construction in Warroad right now, and there's one in, a second building in Alexandria that we've received a small amount of funding from the state, and we need to dip into that bigger pot of money to make that one work. So, uh, they, their goal is to have as many market rate projects as possible, but based on the people we see renting to, the hundred and fifteen percent A M I is not really a factor, that's really our market rate tenants. The eighty, eighty percent A M I is definitely a little bit lower.
When, when you say area median, and what is the area that they're looking at?
Crow Wing County.
Okay, it's not Brainerd.
No, it, it is determined by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, every year, county-specific.
County wine, alright.
So, uh, Crow Wing County.
That makes, that makes much more sense.
Right. So I, I just, I thought that would, uh, be of interest to you, one other thing is, it is more expensive to build downtown than it would be buying some green space on the edge of town somewhere, where we could have a play area. Um, we would not have as much money in the dirt, uh, we probably wouldn't be building an underground garage, which is extremely expensive. Um, this site, we have to shore it, when we take out the old Thrifty White basement, we have to drag shoring around that basement so that the streets don't cave in, so that we can build, that's over half a million dollars to shore this. And you've probably seen that if you've been downtown Minneapolis or St. Paul, where they have all this shoring going around, so the building can't collapse, because we don't have room to make a side slope to make it safe for a worker to be working down there, it's gonna be one-to-one, and so we have to shore it. And my understanding is it would be wood shoring, when the foundation came out of the ground, you know, was capped and was safe, they would actually go down three feet, cut it off, and it, the, the whole piece would stay in the ground. But, um, that's a huge cost of being, doing a downtown project that, uh, we learned about, about four months ago. So it's, you know, it, it is more expensive, um, and that's where we hope we can work together. Uh, w- we do plan on, um, applying for a deed grant for, uh, redevelopment, which will help cover some demo costs, um, some of that shoring cost, they said they would include that, there, there's an application for that in August. I believe that is also a conduit deal that runs through the city, I don't believe it comes directly to us, so we may be working together on that. Again, this one, we don't know yet when the R F P is gonna come out on this, in the past, it's been sort of a late summer, maybe fall release, an application due at towards the end of the year and an award in spring, but they just got it a couple of weeks ago, so I, I don't know that they know when they're gonna let this go out yet. But, uh, so we've got a lot of things that, a lot of moving targets, and we really need all of them to happen, to make this project, if one of them doesn't happen, we have just a bigger gap and we have a problem.
Well, no, knowing the timing of everything that you're talking about.
Yep.
And if everything came to fruition when you're expecting it should or could, when would you s- see this begin, the, the actual groundwork, everything?
Summer of twenty-four.
Okay.
Wayne?
Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm more excited now than I was when I first heard of this project, and being in the housing market like I am, managing property, you guys are gonna rent that out so fast, those prices that you're quoting are fantastic. And, uh, Brainerd's very fortunate to, to have this go forward, we gotta do everything we can to help this project get going as quickly as possible.
Okay, any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Not so much a question as.
Comment?
Comment, uh, love the project, think it's a great idea, um, I do like Mike's comment about the potential for diagonal parking. I know that we can't do it on Eighth Street, we've looked at that, there's potential to do it because it's a state Eighth Street, it would be a gigantic hassle. However, Laurel Street, looks like there's plenty of space there, I'm also a fan of trees, and there's some nice trees there, so if you can save me some trees, you'll win bonus.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, Brainerd's total, total project cost is?
Should know that off the top of my head, right now, we're about seventeen point eight million dollars. Two-hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and two dollars a unit.
And what do you foresee if, uh, your, your requests and all these different applications you got out there for grant money and workforce, uh, housing money, what do you see the actual money you will be receiving, uh, accumulating to, what would be the total amount of that seventeen point, what'd you say, seventeen-six?
Um, so right now.
What kind of, what kind of horse you gonna have in this race yourselves?
Right now, we have, uh, cash in a little over two million.
And when it's all said and done, if everything comes to fruition, Mike, you're.
So we've, we, we're estimating right now about eleven million in debt.
Okay.
And that would be a first mortgage and a TIF mortgage, that would be both of those things, I've just estimated some things for TIFs, cause I had to come up with some numbers. Um, and then the rest would be, uh, grants.
Okay.
The one, the one thing about the workforce housing program, it didn't used to be this way, it's actually taxable income too. They give you this money to build housing, and then they tax you on it.
So what are the taxes right now on the, uh, Thrifty White building, as it says?
I would say they're fifteen thousand?
Fifteen?
Uh, Jennifer, go next.
Propose.
Okay?
I have.
And you're next.
Oh, there you go.
Who's got her?
This is great. Jennifer, why don't you ask your question?
Alright, thank you.
While Skip's thinking for that.
Um, Skip, another question, or if you would please address the overhead wires, the, uh, in the alley, and what your plan is for that?
We reached out to all the, there's three utilities that run on those overhead lines, um, Brainerd Public Utilities, um, and then there's two, um, internet media lines that are on there. I was looking at it, it was very scary to me, um, but in talking to the Brainerd Public Utilities, I wanna say, they said it would cost like four grand to get rid of their wires and reroute it.
And they would be underground or no, would they be underground or no?
I don't know that, no, they weren't go under a building, they were gonna reroute in somewhere, I didn't ask questions.
Will they still be overhead wires, or will, they will not be overhead wires through that alley?
Not through our site, and then the other two, um, internet lines, uh, were a few thousand dollars, so the whole thing was under ten thousand dollars to get rid of the overhead line.
Did you find the stack, the tax?
About eighteen thousand.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Does that include the other two sites too?
No.
No, not really.
I just asked.
Just a quick question, what are your, what are your plans for the site in the meantime? Hanging out waiting, specifically the parking lot?
Well, we've, we have an alarm system in the building, we shut the water off because there was a leak this winter, uh, except for the fire sprinkler system. Um, we were hoping to just leave things be until next year, um, we believed we have the building secured, and, and with an alarm, back down the way down here, the alarm went off, it was just a false alarm, but anyways, we had to deal with that. Is there a particular concern?
Just wondering, just inquiring.
Our mayor's always planning, always.
Okay.
If you did want to lease spots between now and the time you guys start digging, you probably would be able to pay your taxes partially at least.
No?
People are always looking for parking in downtown, so you have probably, what, thirty, forty spots there?
Probably.
Did I see a handle here? Any other questions of our developers or our staff? Any other comments, Skip or Andrew, to, as to what you might need to know, Jeff?
Yeah, I just, um, so maybe staff, uh, how do you foresee this coming before us if, uh, yeah, I mean, it doesn't appear that anybody on the council would be against having H R A take this, uh, lead on this, so with this June fifth, would we be looking at it to approve that, or?
Actually, be in Ju- July, be into July, as we're working with our financial advisors, so, not an exact date yet, Jeff, but we're kinda working backwards, so, so we can work with Skip and make sure we get some time.
Jennifer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I think one of the, you know, couple of reasons for calling the joint meeting between the H R A and the council was to hear more about the development and the proposed development and what D W Jones was looking at doing, but then also to see if, just in general, if the council were agreeable to this being an H R A redevelopment TIF district, and then likewise, if the H R A was agreeable to having the redevelopment TIF district. So I think, you know, just kind of getting a sense from council and H R A board if that's agreeable, and then we would proceed, uh, moving forward. Obviously, can't make a motion.
No votes tonight.
That would be our, that would be our first step though, to establish whether it's going that route or something, okay.
So if you're against that, it'd be nice to hear it now, because maybe you've thought of something that I haven't, or somebody else hasn't.
I haven't thought of anything.
Well, you might, something might come up after you think about it.
I don't believe you, Jeff. You flots.
Alright, we're gonna try and get out of here in twenty minutes, if you have any other questions, I'm sure Jennifer can forward them to whoever, who have, to whoever needs to answer them. We gotta give item three some consideration, which is an overview of the Brainerd H R A.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, uh, like you said, we'll try to get through this in twenty minutes, maybe even less, I don't wanna take up a ton of time, but it was a good opportunity for myself to get in front of council members, you know, I sit on, uh, the meetings and listen to the council meetings, uh, but I don't usually have a, a, a lot of updates for you guys, and I wanted to give you an update on what we are, wh- why we're here, what, what kind of entity we are, and, and hopefully my board knows all about this as well, but this is a good, uh, time for, for my board to hear this again as well. Uh, so, H R A, what is it, it's the Housing Redevelopment Authority, uh, and we are a local unit of government, just like the city of Brainerd, we are a separate local unit of government, uh, we are governed by a state statute, state statute four-six-nine, we hear about that and read about that quite often in our offices. Uh, we can be, HRAs can be created by a city or a county, so you will also hear Crow Wing County H R A quite often, as I'm talking about projects that are happening in and around Brainerd and the greater Crow Wing County, and that is because we also are the staff for Crow Wing County H R A through a shared services agreement. The Brainerd H R A does staff the Crow Wing County H R A. Uh, HRAs are, it's the intent to be the housing redevelopment arm of the city or the county, so we do work in partnership with the city, uh, we wanna be good partners with that local municipality, uh, and work in tandem with you guys. Uh, that's why we are working to try to get this, uh, TIF district and figure out who wants to, to do it. As of the, the latest, uh, intro that I had with. As of the, the latest info that I had with the Department of Housing and Urban Development, there are ninety-eight of us in the state, uh, and back when Jennifer was in my chair, there were about a hundred and fifty-five. So we have conglomerated, we have, have condensed a little bit, uh, by about a third, yeah, about a third, so.
Eric, are you one of those ninety-eight, or are you three of those ninety-eight?
We are three of those ninety-eight, with Crow Wing County, Crosby, and Brainerd. So, uh, we are three of those, uh, good percentage. What's the purpose of the HRA? First and foremost, to provide a sufficient supply of adequate, safe, and, and sanitary dwellings. Uh, we can clear and redevelop blighted areas, which, uh, this site that we're talking about today is, is considered blighted. Uh, we can perform duties according to our comp plan, much like the city has their comp plan, and, and they, you know, we want to perform those duties. We can try to remedy the shortage of housing for low-income residence, and we try to redevelop blighted areas in situations where the private sector would not act without government participation. So again, very similar to what we're looking at with this TIF district. A private entity does want to do something, but for, it is pretty cost prohibitive. So that's where we try to come in and, and help make something, uh, happen for the redevelopment side. Uh, we can also acquire and sell property. Uh, we can issue bonds, just like a city can. And we can operate and, and acquire affordable housing, including federally assisted public housing. So we do own and operate a number of units that we'll get to in, in the slides upcoming. Uh, we also administer this, administer the Section Eight program, also known as the Housing Choice Voucher Program. Uh, some other things that we do, we can develop and administer, administer housing rehab loan and, and grant programs. That's something that John and, and his department do. So we go out and try to make sure that the housing stock in the city, uh, is still livable. We want, we can't lose, we can't afford to lose any of these units that we have because we have such a shortage of housing. So we do have rehab programs to hopefully help home, homeowners or landlords fix up those units to make sure that they're, uh, in good working order. We can operate parking facilities. I don't want to. Something we can do.
Do you want to lease out Mike?
I, I don't know. I'm flying conversation about that, Skip. Talk with my financial advisor. And we, we can develop and administer, administer down payment programs and housing development projects. Again, we're kind of governed by state statute. We've been around since nineteen sixty-nine as the Brainerd HRA. We are the oldest in the county. Uh, Crow Wing County came along quite a while, quite a while after that, and I believe it was nineteen eighty-six when the Crow Wing County HRA was up and running. Uh, Crosby was around the same, same vintage as, as the Brainerd HRA. Uh, as you know, hopefully, City Council, you guys do authorize and allow us to levy on a yearly basis. Uh, we have a very small percentage of, of levy authority, uh, and we do come to the council on a yearly basis to request that. Uh, and with that, we, we try to do all of the things that we just talked about with those dollars that we, we do levy. Uh, what is, what is our mission? That's always very vitally important to what we do on, on our board. It's really to provide affordable housing and redevelopment opportunities to strengthen our neighborhoods and our community. Pretty simple, right? Takes a while to do, and, and takes some diligent planning to do. But it is what we try to do on a daily basis to, to strengthen our, our community. Some of our recent goals, you know, redevelopment is a big goal. Continue to, to redevelop the commercial and rental and owner-occupied properties in the city of Brainerd. We do, uh, for our strategic plan that we created last year, that's one of our, our highlighted goals. For housing, we want to continue to provide high-quality, safe, and affordable housing for existing and potential residents and participants. We do own a number of housing units, and we got to make sure that those are quality and up to a certain standard, both federally and, and just as good neighbors. Uh, we want to have good engagement with our developers. That leads to hopefully some good projects that we can partner in to create more housing units that we know are desperately needed. Uh, Crow Wing County HRA did a housing study, uh, back in twenty-twenty, and it showed a large need for housing units, thirty-four hundred units within the county, uh, between, you know, two thousand twenty and, I think, two thousand thirty-four. So we needed to add a lot of units in the county. A lot of those are going to be in the city of Brainerd, we hope, because that's our population center. That's where all of our things are, that's where our services are. So we've got to work to, to do that. Land acquisition, that's one that our board is wanting us to focus on as well, so we can potentially have land to offer to a developer. And that's an exciting, uh, thing to think about as, as far as we can then hopefully have a better say in what goes up. You know, we work with, uh, D.W. Jones and, and kind of, you know, give them our input on, on what we hope to see, but at the end of the day, it's theirs. Uh, if we had some land that we could offer, uh, and, and acquire to, to offer to a developer, we would have a little bit more pliability as to what was built. We think this is a great project, but it's their project. We know that, that they're driving the bus on there. Uh, and then workforce retention and growth, mainly for our workforce. Internally, for our, our agency, we want to continue to maintain our staffing levels, uh, you know, making sure that we can grow smart, uh, and have some good succession planning. I'm hoping, hoping to be around for a while, but I know some of my other staff are, are hoping to retire one day. So we need to make sure that we can succession plan correctly through staffing and make sure that we, we kind of promote from within if we can. Uh, some of the programs that we offer, uh, again, we talked about what kind of housing we have. We own the North Star Apartments. Hopefully, everybody knows that. That's the big high-rise outside of high school, right outside of our new Lyman White Park. Uh, and that's, uh, two hundred, or that's a hundred and sixty-two units of housing there. Uh, overall, we own or manage three hundred and twenty-five units within the city of Brainerd proper. We do the voucher, uh, program, which is the Section Eight program. That's three hundred and twenty-six vouchers that we, uh, are, are running on a monthly basis. Uh, we've got the, the Bridges Program and our Family Self-Sufficiency Program, where we've got, you know, other families that are, are utilizing that, working through those programs, similar to the Section Eight program. We do also utilize our tax-forfeited property, uh, to hold properties that are, are on the tax-forfeit roles for the county. And if we can get people to, uh, developers to come in and purchase those, we can, we can actually sell those to them for a very low cost, uh, and hopefully get infill projects done. And then we do, you know, housing and commercial rehab. A little bit more on tax-forfeited property. Uh, that was established a number of years ago to ensure that, that we can get those tax-forfeited lots back onto the tax rolls and get, uh, get some income generated for both the city and the county and the school district. Main goal there is to build density and tax base, and ensure that that, the forfeited properties are developed. If we are doing infill projects, we're hopefully eliminating blight. If we see a house that, uh, you know, is in need of, you know, either raising, which we never want to if we don't have to, but there are, you know, again, that redevelopment side of it. If we, we see blighted properties, we can step in and try to remediate that and get another building built. We wanted to try to create a clear state for, straightforward and efficient procedure for us as the HRA and developers to act on the acquisition of those tax-forfeited properties, and really encourage the developer investment to, to stabilize any neighborhoods that are experiencing any of that blight. Some of the projects that we've been in, uh, involved with, again, uh, both between a Crow Wing County HRA and a Brainerd HRA, uh, partnership, uh, as we, we hope you all have heard of Brainerd Oaks, Serene Pines, and Delmar Estates. We've been working to, uh, with the developer-level contracting for a number of years to create single-family housing in those three developments that had been failed. Through the city participation in those, uh, the city allowed us to really move forward with that development and those three developments by allowing some of the, uh, tax assessments to be waived or relieved in lieu of, of getting those properties built, to get those, all of those properties off of the tax-forfeited rolls and, and to be profitable again. To date, we had, you know, eighty-one lots in Brainerd Oaks, uh, and to date, we've sold sixty-six of those to the developer. Sixty-two of those have already been sold to the end user, and we've got a couple for sale and, and one for sale and three in construction. So, uh, again, this started back with, with Jennifer at the helm, and has continued on. It's been a great, uh, success between those three, three developments. Uh, and that would not have happened for the, for not the, the council taking definitive action to do that and partnering with the HRA and the county HRA to do that. You can see the similar, uh, statistics for Serene Pines and Delmar as well. Some photos here for, uh, you know, some of the redevelopment projects out in Brainerd Oaks. Always interesting to see what the sale prices were. Again, we started this five, six years ago. Sale prices then, a hundred and sixty-four thousand. Uh, now, more recently, about three hundred and twenty-five thousand. This was not an affordable housing, uh, deal. Uh, the developer was able to, to go at market rate for all of their housing. Again, this is clearing blight and cleaning up blight, so it meets the, the standard for what we need to do. Uh, Serene Pines, again, and Delmar, kind of that two-twenty-nine to four-twenty-five range, and, and those are continuing to be built out. Uh, just a fun little note, you know, a hundred and twelve lots were involved with those three developments. At the time that, that development agreement came, the tax values for those forfeited properties was just over a million dollars, a million, sixty-five thousand, two hundred dollars. In twenty-twenty-two, I did a, a quick check of what had been built out. And again, the county kind of lags behind by about a year. But the properties that had been built out then had a tax, or an estimated market value of eighteen million, six hundred and sixty-five thousand. So that, I think that's an incredible amount of tax base that, that has been created. And again, City Council is, is very much, uh, to, to be thanked for, for getting that development going again. Uh, we've certainly been busy in downtown Brainerd. Uh, it's been a few years since we, we were awarded some Small Cities Development Grant dollars to, to do revitalization projects down there. There's a nice list of, of properties that we did touch. And happy to, to show off some of those with the pictures on the next couple of slides. You'll see some of the before and after pictures. If you've been downtown the last few years, you know the, the, what it looks like. But it's kind of fun to take a peek back and look at some of the, the onings and things like that that, that definitely look a lot better, uh, today. So we, we certainly enjoy working through that. Small Cities Development Program is something that we do utilize quite often. Uh, we also had a Northeast Brainerd grant, uh, where we had about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of grant funds that went into single-family homes, uh, owner-occupied homes and mixed-use rental units. Uh, again, to make sure that the housing stock that we have, uh, is viable for the long term, and we want to make sure that that is, is continuing to stay out there. Upcoming, you know, we're, we're looking at, uh, still a couple of different programs or a couple of different grants for small cities. We did apply for a twenty-twenty-three grant in Southeast Brainerd. Were tentatively slated or have applied for eight units of owner-occupied rehab, twelve units of single-family rental rehab, and that was submitted on May first. The council did act to allow us to submit that grant, so we appreciate that. Uh, and then we do anticipate applying for an additional Small Cities Grant when we go towards Washington and Washington Street and that, uh, project up in twenty-twenty-six. So John's working with his team to make sure that we meet those marks, uh, but we anticipate a larger project, uh, request for that. Uh, I went through that pretty quickly. I definitely got through that in twenty minutes. Would be happy to, to, to sit down with any city councillors, Mr. Mayor, if you have questions on, on what we do, why we do it.
We got eight minutes. Any questions now?
Absolutely. Could do that as well.
None? Thank you, Eric. Anything else we missed?
Yeah, I was just curious if, uh, hey, you have an estimate of what your increment time period might be? I know it said nine, between nine and twenty-six. I don't know if there's a difference in this particular program, but the, uh, is that hard to figure out?
We're going to be on the high side.
Yeah, and, and so that'll come through the, the analysis a little bit. Um, and I would assume, Michaela, you might be able to answer this, that would come before the, the council. We would have that answered before we bring that to council.
That's what I was thinking. We'll see all those details, yes, in July? So it's not just a, do you want TIF? But the agreement would be there, yes? Or at least a deed?
The resolution to allow us to move forward with that.
Okay.
Would be in front of the council, as far as I understand.
But you'll know...
We should know more information.
Yeah.
Certainly.
Okay?
All right, I'll just, sorry, I'll just clarify, you know, the nine years, those are different types of tax increment districts. And so redevelopment district can go up to twenty-six years. Part of the analysis is what they're, what you're financing is, what their need is. So it would anticipate redevelopment districts are in the longer range, but that's where we'll do the analysis to see what the duration actually needs to be.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff or our developers or Michaela? We are going to look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.